Thank you for joining us this evening. Before we start our meeting, I'd like to, Jack, please come forward and give us our location. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this night, Lord, to bless your name, Lord, and to ask you to bless this meeting here tonight, Lord. We ask you, Lord, to help our mayor and our city council members make the right decisions on all matters that are brought here today, Lord, tonight. Lord, we ask you to bless all that are here tonight. Bless our fire, our police, and our emergency responders, Lord. Help them, Lord, to do their jobs safely, Lord. Heavenly Father, we also ask you, Lord, to bless this city of Los Banos, Lord, and all its occupants, Lord, and help us to grow and be safe, Lord. Lord, we pray all this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I'd like to call this meeting to order for January 2nd. Okay, Lucy, if we could have roll call, please.
Lambert, Lewis, Amabile.
Here. Our first item is consideration of the agenda as submitted. And Ken, let's see.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the agenda as submitted. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carried. Now, we do have a presentation to make. Be made. Jennifer, if you could come forward. There you are. So, we have a lot of outstanding employees for the city of Los Banos. And at our last meeting, we recognized our employee of the year, but we are very, come a little closer. I don't bite. To recognize Jennifer Aloha. She's the homeless outreach coordinator. Even before I was elected, I heard a lot of good things about all the work you were doing for the city, and we really appreciate it. We're honored to have you working for our city. And we have a lot of good employees, but for, let's see, you are the month of December, so last month, you are employee of the month, and we congratulate you for being part of the city and for your hard work. And here's your certificate of recognition and congratulations. Thank you. Okay, now we come to our public forum members of the public. May I address the city council on any item, a public within the public interest, within the jurisdiction of this city? We can't take any action on any item that's not on the agenda, but if you have any words to say to the city council, please come forward at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Josh, Stacy, the rest of the team. Won't name them all by name, because if I keep naming names, we'll be here for a bit. My name is Nathan Alonso. I am your government affairs representative for Pacific Gas and Electric. Just wanted to come by today to reintroduce myself to those of you who I've gotten a chance to work with already, and say hello to Mayor Amabile. I remember when I was in elementary school and throughout high school, he was the mayor. I got a lot older. Now he's back, but he looks the same. That's quite infuriating.
I was 16 years old back then.
There we go. I love it. But good news on our front, we just did a rates update. For the first time many years, electric rates will be flat. The only effects that we will be seeing will be in gas rates, and those have to do with some maintenance and a lot of work that needs to be done throughout the system. But the, I think, welcome news is that electric rates, for the first time in a very long time, will be, will be flat. I look forward to coming back to the council to give an annual update about some of the projects, some of the work that we're doing in Los Banos and the surrounding area, and to go over some, more of our objectives and some of our policy priorities this year. I'll work with Josh and the team to schedule that, but want to drop by and just say hello and say that, as always, I am here to be a resource for you and make sure that if you have any project needs or any concerns regarding anything PG&E related, I am your resource and I'm happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward.
Feral cat that got fixed. Hi, my name is Blant George, and I live in the downtown area. I wanted to speak today. You know, our city has progressed when it comes to our animals. Thanks to our city, the different departments always teamed up with the shelter whenever there was events for spay neutering and everything. We did have a grant, and we've utilized that grant to be able to do many programs: microchipping, spay and neuter, rabies shots, also microchipping. But so, the shelter, and I've said it once and I'll say, I'll praise them again, with the police department, the administration team, the, of course, the code enforcement, Sergeant Mendez, along with the shelter individuals and those five of them, have worked training the dogs, working with their minds, developing them, and they're constantly getting cats and dogs out. They've been in touch with, also rescues. They've worked so hard, and they are an A-plus team. When there was microchipping events, Mayor and Council, Parks and Recs was there to offer the parking lot. We saw public works that would come and support the team even before the event. We've developed, and now we ask the mayor, you mayor, and the council, and the future council, the two individuals that will fill those seats, that now we're going to need to progress to making sure that we have some funding to continue this. I know that you're positive and you're aboard, on board with this. I did read in an interview that you asked people to even volunteer for the shelter. So, thank you so much for doing that. But the funding source is really crucial, only because we've got the shelter, but that is, that's, that's the end game, in a way. The goal is to microchip, dog license, do all these things upfront. Because if we do this upfront, the great thing about that is, is that when a dog is lost or a cat's missing, you know, that microchip will get them back to their loved ones. And so, having these kinds of events, we all remember back when, when we would meet at the Pacheco Park. And it was like a party, for those of you that, that weren't here back when. But everybody, every breed of dog was from one end to the park to the other, and everybody met each other and asked how their grandchildren were. It was a wonderful event. So, with your funding, with you going forward, and with that support, the shelter can keep advancing and advancing more. So, again, up ahead, I already know that you guys are supporting. It's just really crucial at the beginning. Also, with the dog licensing, Mayor and Council, what will happen is that when there is a serious, you know, incident, or there's a dog at large, or any kind of situation, there's a database of those dogs. And with those databases and with that funding, a little bit of that money will also go to the bottom line. So, thank you very much, and thank you for your time. And remember, I, my ear is notched. I'm a feral cat that got fixed. Okay, thank you. Bye.
Anyone else would like to come forward? Okay, I do not see or hear anyone. So, thank you for everyone that spoke at the public forum, and we will move on. Oh, yes. We did receive two letters via email, and the council has received them. One from Melissa Holman and one from Deanna Corillo in favor of Refugio Yamas for the seat on the city council. Those will be published online on our website, oops, losbanos.org. And so, if you want to read those letters, they will be there available for the public to read. Okay, we will move on now. And next item is consideration of approval of the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, Lucy, you want to read off that, please?
The consent agenda are as follows. Warrants numbers 249056 through 249355, in the amount of $2,301,280.60, minutes for the December 18th, 2024 city council meeting. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, what's the councils would like to do with this? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is consideration of the next steps in filling the Los Banos city council members vacancy in District 2 and 3. And with this, we will go over to our city attorney, Mr. Bill Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is the second follow-up to your decision on December 4th to fill the two vacant districts' seats, District 2 and District 3, by appointment. After that decision on December 4th, quite a bit has happened. City Clerk's Office posted the notices of vacancy, received the, this middle of, I believe, 13, 11?
13.
13. I'm sorry. 13 applicants. And have, those have all been posted on the website as well. At your last meeting, as we reviewed this, the steps to be taken, the council had comments regarding the interview questions. The interview questions that are attached to tonight's agenda are the questions that came out of the discussion at the last city council meeting. I believe we eliminated two of the questions, and we modified one of the questions. I think it's question four. And so, those are the proposed interview questions for you, as well as we have in attachment two set forth, now that we know the number of applicants, we've set forth a number of alternatives for you, actually, three alternatives as to how you want to proceed with the actual selection after you've done the interviews on the coming, next coming Wednesday night. And I can go through those if you like. Hopefully, you've reviewed those, and if there are any, any of those three alternates that you want to go with, staff would be happy to receive those tonight so that we can prepare for your meeting next Wednesday night. Short, short and sweet. We've talked about this at two previous meetings, and we're here to answer any questions or to take any direction you might like to give us.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I've kind of looked over these several times, and, you know, I feel we could get this done a little bit quicker. We all, we've all read the applications. We're going to hear them. And I look at possibly, you know, I like alternative one. We got three of us. We all, you know, it could be possibly that we all pick two, you know, we're only filling two spots. We can eliminate, eliminate, and then go with the first three, or possibly the majority pick on that very first vote. We could probably move a little quicker. In the stance, instead of having to worry about, you know, first choice, second choice, third choice, in the point system, I like this, I like to pick my number one person that I feel. And it might be the same as yours, or it might be the same as Ms. Lewis, and, you know, just eliminate all the process, you know. And if we do decide there's one for each one of us, you know, that just takes the rest of them, drops them off, and then we can just move on to what we're going to do with the next step, you know, with the three. That's, I just wanted to give you my opinion.
So, I've been kicking this around a lot, too. And I don't disagree with you, Ken. I think the issue that I thought about is the one district that has seven people applying for it. If I looked at a lot of other cities that did appointments, and which, you're trying to get them, trying to get the number down to a manageable number, so it works with what you're saying. And when you have seven people, most likely, five, six, four, five, six won't even get a vote. And so, I'm thinking that the district that has four people in it, we could do a vote of the council, or we could rate them, three, two, one, whatever you want to do. But with the seven-person district, I think we should pick our two number-one picks, each one of us. Now, the way other cities did that, when they did that, the form, the math formula usually brings it down. Not all the time, but most likely, 80% of the time, it'll bring it down to four people. And then, we could go on with the same way of we're picking the other four. So, now, we've narrowed the seven down to four, and the other district's already four, you know. And so, then you're, it's apples for apples, really, with the number of people. I sort of like that on the large, the district that has seven people on it. I think the reason why we, and Bill, correct me, did, the three, two, one point thing was done last time?
Yes.
Because I don't think that was done when I was sitting up here. We did it the way you, you said. And I think it's really important that today or before our meeting, we decide what's going to happen if it's a tie. Are we going to pick a name out of a hat? Are we going to flip a coin or whatever like that? That should be decided before we take any votes, I really.
On our next meeting.
Yeah. Or, or we could decide right now how we're going to do it, if there is a tie come next Wednesday.
Quick question. This will be for, for the city attorney. Can we go with the four, with just the three, and then on the larger? Or does it have to be?
The same way, both. He's asking if.
Now, if we went with the second, like, on the third, on the one with a larger amount of seven, if we did go with the, the alternative three, and then at the end, or if we picked then will it fall to where we just did on the, the, the one with the four?
So, there's no standard way of doing this. Cities handle this in a number of different ways. These alternatives kind of pull together what other cities do and what you or the city council has done in the past. So, there's no standard that you have to follow. You can follow one of these three alternatives to the T. You can change it up tonight a little bit if you'd like to, if you feel more comfortable. We're just giving you the alternatives. It's your vote. The thing to remember is, however we do it, the ballots will be public, and it'll, it takes a minimum of two votes of this council of three to select one of, one of the applicants. So, you can do, if you're, what you're, I think what you said is potentially do alternative one for the smaller group, and potentially alternative three for the larger group, and maybe the second round of alternative three would be alternative one. That's, that's what I think I heard you say.
Right. Or that's kind of the way I took.
If there's, if there's, if there's a tie, and there could be a tie, that's when things get a little tricky, and there's no, there's no standard way of breaking the tie. What it says in all of these three alternatives is that you will just repeat what you've been doing until something changes, and you get two affirmative votes on one of the applicants or three affirmative votes. You don't, you definitely want to stay away from going through some random by lot way to choose your next council person. So, I would suggest that hopefully you select somebody, you select somebody using one of these alternatives, and if there's a tie, you debate it amongst yourselves. The votes will be announced, and you can debate the pluses and minuses of each candidate and continue to vote until there's a breakthrough and you get a majority vote.
Yeah. I kind of feel, I mean, we could still use alternative one for both. I mean, we're going to get our.
So, here's my.
If you get down to two, alternative one is, there's not going to be any tie.
Yeah.
So, if you get down to two candidates through some process of elimination, because there's three of you up here, alternative one is never, there's never going to be a tie.
So, with the, the district that has seven, we each vote, on number one, we'd each vote for one person. The chances of us each voting for a different person is pretty likely.
But it could be likely.
I mean, with seven, with seven candidates, is what I'm talking about. Where, when there was four, I think that was less likely. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Alternative three seems to be the most reasonable to me, because if we use, you know, alternative one, because there's four in one district, and alternative three, because there's seven, it, to me, that seems inequitable. I think we need to stick with one form of how we're going to look at appointing people to council. So, alternative three sort of ranks down everybody, no matter what the, if we only had two people in District one, I could possibly see that. I mean, in District two. But I think we need to stick to one alternative, and, and I would be in favor of alternative three.
So, if, so we do, even for the four.
Even for the.
So, we do the four, we each pick two.
Yeah.
The chances of.
I think that's what it says anyway, is that we vote for two.
Well, alternative three is really geared towards those seven, because it's, if you'll notice, round one, alternative three, round one B, says the four applicants receiving the most points.
But in the first sentence, it says each council member shall vote for, for their two first-place applicants. So, if we all have two different first place, it still will, at some point, bring us down to something that are equitable. So, we're only allowed to, to vote for two. We're not voting for three or four or anything like that.
Okay, so maybe I didn't make it clear. If, if alternative three is used for the four applicants, round one is not going to eliminate any of them. The four applicants receiving the most points, or more, if there is a tie for the fourth position, advance to the next round. So, if you only have four applicants.
And six votes.
You're only voting for two.
Yeah, because we could all have, one of them could be different, each one of us, and the second one could all be the same, and that would be, and that would be the
Yeah. So, they're going to get points either way. You may pick two different people. I may pick two different people, and make, you may get two different people. So, each one's going to have certain points. So, that's why I think alternative one is the better option for that.
I'm still going to vote for alternative three.
For both of them? For both of them?
Yes.
Okay, so, again, I still don't think alternative three works for the four applicants. So, everybody votes, so you have four.
Why wouldn't it, Phil? Why wouldn't it work if you're only choosing two?
Okay, so if, um, round one of alternative three is everybody has two first-place votes, correct? And then you drop down to B, and it says each vote is worth two points. The four applicants receiving the most points, well, if you only have four applicants, they're all gonna receive the most points, and so you're not eliminating anybody. And so round one doesn't make sense with only four applicants.
So why do we have to have the word four in there?
You could change that.
Yeah.
He voted for two, and we brought those two forward.
Yeah, I think.
We didn't limit it to a number, but there was only two candidates at that time that they brought forward, 'cause they all voted for the same two people.
Yeah, alternative three is really geared towards multiple, multiple applicants over more than four. The other two are, well, alternative one is more geared towards a smaller pool such as four. So alternative one would work with four, um, alternative two would work with four. In order to have alternative three work for four, you would have to change, in my mind, you would be wanting to change how many advanced to round two. You could have three advanced to round two. But like I said, by having four applicants according to this, this particular way, you're not eliminating anybody, everybody would just jump to round two automatically, so it makes round one meaningless.
So B would just be the three applicants?
You could have three, you could, you could do it to three if you want.
Yeah, so then. And that'd be, well, I had different, but I understand the reason why you wanna keep it the same, I understand that, too. I'm, I'm more partial to number three, and if you wanna change the amount of applicants that go to round two. Uh, so for everybody out there, round one, we'd each vote for our two top candidates, and they have to be two different people, can't be the same person. Then we go to round two, and each vote is worth two points, and we say we go to three applicants, and you, and you give them the points, right? Is that how that works?
Mm-hmm. So from what I'm hearing is we could do alternative three for the four candidates with some modifications to alternative three just for the four, the pool of four, leave it the same for the pool of seven.
Yeah.
I'd rather just do, if we can keep it at the alternative one for the four, I'd, I'd rather knock that one out in the butt, and then just move to the seventh.
So I can, I can prepare something for you to consider next Wednesday night, where alternative three would work for both pools. It would, it would be a little different for each pool, and then you can decide that night, that's how you wanna do it, or you can, can still consider alternative one or alternative two.
Uh, Mayor, I, I think we need to clarify that tonight, so we're not having to haggle when we come next week. So we need to be.
It's probably a good idea, it's probably a good idea.
True.
So if, if.
So everybody's number two could win. If you give first place three, second place two, uh, third place one, and our number two is on everybody's list, that would actually be the highest voter. You know, that's just a possibility, that's, and that's the way it works, it's called points.
Or you could just bring two forward and then go from there. Each of them can bring two without points, and then you have all of their two favorites, and there might be some overlapping, and then you go to step two. That's what we did when we appointed Mr. Yamas.
Do it that way?
Well, I think we, I agree, we need to decide tonight. Okay, I think the real important that if we vote for more than one, you can't put all your votes for the same person. That sort of defeats, defeats everything that we're trying to do. And. You want me to make the most, guys?
Well, let's.
You wanna know what?
So what I'm hearing from the council is Mr. Lambert likes alternative one, Ms. Lewis likes alternative three. Um, what I'm telling you is, I'm not sure alternative three will work for the smaller group, and will definitely work for the larger group. Um, and so you need to decide if alternative three, you wanna use that one as is for the larger group, and then what do you wanna do for the smaller group of four?
I like alternative three, too, for the larger group.
Mm-hmm.
And if you wanna keep everything the same, you could do, just change the four applicants to a different number on B.
Yeah, how many would make it, so what you're trying to do is you're trying to eliminate, you're trying to, yeah, I would, I would eliminate, uh, I would, I would keep three and move them down to round two.
I also think, you know, se- uh, thirteen people are, are gonna be up here talking to us, and it's, that's not easy, you know? And, uh, uh, I think round three gives another round and gives people more hope, too. There's more people moving on to round two. I like that, instead of you have seven people and it goes down to two right then, five people are out. I just, I like, I think that's better for the public, too, I think, is my take on it. I'm for three, changing it for the four, the numbers. Ken, you're for one?
I'm for one.
And.
But I would go with the third.
You will do.
I would want the one for the four.
Actually, in the larger group, you could have, both, both groups, you could have three applicants moved to round two, instead of the four.
Okay.
It still works. So you could go with alternative three, and all you have to do is change B, and to three applicants receiving the most points, go to round two, and it works for both those groups.
Ms. Lewis, you okay with that? I'm okay with that, Ken.
Run that one more time.
So, uh, the alternative three for the small group and the large group will work if you change how many make it into round two, and how many, and that would be three from round one would make it into round two. So let's say you're, you're dealing with the small group of four. Round one is gonna reduce that to three applicants making it into round two. And then, then, then you just go through round two. If you have a group of seven, based off a point system, and then if you have a group of seven, and you, uh, have the three highest points going to round two, that works as well.
Everybody okay with that?
I still like my alternative one, but.
So let's go to the next issue, ties. I don't wanna sit up here voting ten times and having two people tie, two people tie, or whatever would happen. I know there's less chance of this, but I think we should decide what we do right now, in case that happened. Hopefully, hopefully it doesn't happen.
Well, that's why, you know, alternative one, we wouldn't have to worry about a tie, but.
Oh, no, you could still worry about that. I still, there's a.
It's two to one, though, right?
True, but if.
It, it's hard to tell, 'cause you don't know whether you'll have three tie, two tie, and, um, so, so it's kind of tough to figure out what the tiebreaker is until you know how, how many you have, uh, in the tie. But it depends on your comfort level as to whether or not you wanna choose one of persons to sit in these two seats by some type of random or by chance.
I don't necessarily wanna do that, but I don't wanna be voting, 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 and nothing's changing. But if everybody's okay with that, then we'll go with that.
Well, I think you need to give yourself some flexibility, and if that's happening, we have these other way, other.
Oh, that's true, yeah, we could change it.
We have these others that you can change to, that can possibly break that tie.
So if we do have a tie, we could go to number two and take a vote. Okay. So you got two, three, and one on one.
If the foregoing does not result in selection, to fill the vacancy, the city council should consider a process to break the tie. And I know you want some certainty tonight, but it just depends on what that tie is. It's a, in terms of how you wanna break that tie, and how many more times you wanna vote after listening to each other debate the qualities of those three that make it into that round.
Okay.
I think we've done this a few times, Lucy, I don't recall us ever having a tie.
No. Well, we did have that one time where, with, um, Mr. Pruitt, remember? But that was, he didn't get a second or something, I don't think it was a tie.
I was here, and I don't even remember that.
Just kind of the nature of how we're trying to do this, there's always the chance of a tie of, you know.
What would a tiebreaker be, what choices would the?
Well, I just read about a city up north where they drew straws to break the tie, and that was actually a tie from, uh, the vote, the election, that the two gentlemen, no, it was a, a lady and a gentleman tied a number of votes. Whoever picked the short straw lost, that, so there, you, you can do it that way, that's.
Yeah, I don't wanna do it that way, I don't like that.
So if you have a tie, and you're going around and around and around in circles, remember, we still, I, I know you wanna get this done, but we, you, you still have till February to get this done, and hopefully you can. Um, I don't know how things change if you seat one of these seats and not the other. Um, there's a lot of variations of how things can work out here. And so hopefully there isn't a tie, but I think we have the basics for, if there is a tie, you know, how you proceed.
Okay. So you have direction.
And what your choices are, yeah, I.
You have direction.
I am, I'm direction.
Are you clear on your direction? Good.
So the direction I understand is we're gonna just alter alternative three, um, so that it works for both the small group and the large group. And the way we're gonna do that, um, is change, uh, subparagraph B. And Lucy and I will, like, kick it over this week, and if, if we see some kind of glitch with that, we'll, and I know you don't wanna debate this that night, um, but we'll bring that to your attention. But you'll still have these other alternatives available if that glitch kind of gets you into a situation where you can't break a tie.
Okay.
One more thing there?
Sure.
Uh, I just don't think we're gonna have a tie, e- even in alternative one.
Well, good.
At least in the, in, uh, the lesson four.
The idea is to get down to two applicants, and then you're obviously not gonna have a tie if you have two, 'cause you have three people voting up here.
Well, I mean, there's, there's, it's a possibility of both of us, some of, one of us, or both of, three, out of three of us, we pick the same person. So I mean, right then, that lets you know that, that that person.
I would say, yeah, I say round two, you're pretty much gonna select somebody.
Yeah, but I see we did faster, just, I mean, 'cause there's only four, uh, four, uh, people. Uh, the seven one, I mean, I mean, I, I could still say we could still use alternative one, but, uh, I mean, I guess with, you know, I could see doing alternative one, though, in the first one, alternative three with the, with the changes, with that one.
We're halfway there, Ken, we got you halfway there.
Yeah, I, I just, I think it's, it's easier with alternative one, uh, just with the lesser votes, so we don't have to sit there and go back and forth, go back and forth, uh, with that one.
Okay, you got two and a half votes.
'Cause, uh, just real quick before we move on.
Yeah, sure.
The point system, we're gonna get down to the point system in Norlak. Norlak, wait a minute, I mean, could be your number three, could be your number four pick, oh, oh, now, you know, it's getting on the points, where it's not even close to our number one pick, where if we all three pick a number one person as an alternative one, we're gonna see, we're gonna hear a lot of good stuff out of it, you know, from everything. Uh, and like I told you before, there's certain things I wanna hear, like I told you before, you know, off of one of the questions. So, uh, and it's probably on the same with all, with both of you, too. And it could come down to that one person. That's why I think alternative one, and if we all pick three, then we, then we go back into that, or a different person on number three, then we go back, say, okay, let's sit back and talk about how we're gonna, and then it could be one of our number twos, or number one, number twos for each other, then, you know, in the next round for that one, then we'll.
Yeah, alternative two is very close to alternative three.
No, I'm talking about the second round, uh, number, uh, number three out of the seven. If we pick all three, three number ones, or if we went with alternative one on number three, this is why I understand number three, I think would work both, uh, on both. Alternative three, uh, on this, on the larger group, if, or alternative one on the larger group, if you picked one, I picked one, there's possibly we could pick the same person, too. But if we didn't, you had one person, I had one person, then that, now we're limiting it down to three again. And then we go, and that's our number one, more likely. Uh, which, like I said before, we're gonna hear a lot of info out of you. Uh, I just feel, and then, that number one, or maybe your number one that I didn't pick could be my number two, and then, or Ms. Lewis, her number one could be my number two. Well, that next vote's gonna, gonna bring it out, who it's gonna be in the next voting. That's why I like number, alternative one.
Okay, so we'll put alternative three as the preferred alternative with that, that modification. I'll still have these alternatives available that night for us to go over.
Okay.
If there's a tie and something changes, and it's, we'll go forward that way.
Okay, fine with that.
Do you have any comments on the amount of time you're gonna afford each applicant? We have fifteen minutes here, but Lucy reminded me that nobody used fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I'd say five minutes.
You get a lot out of it, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's just like the podium on, on our.
Well, it was gonna be five minutes plus sometimes for question, for a total of fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I think I, I had a timer, and I never called anybody on time.
Preferred would be alternative three for the voting, changing four applicants to three applicants making it into round two. And then we'll have alternative and alternative one and two as part of it, if you wanna, like, make a move, you know, if alternative three is not working for some reason, we'll, we'll have these other alternatives available.
Which could come back down to alternative one.
Yeah, it just, just depends on what, what, what you guys do. Ultimately, it's your vote, and ultimately, it takes two positive votes to select somebody out of these three people sitting right here.
Yeah, that's what it goes.
Quick, quick, on the minutes, again, you're talking about the minutes. That fifteen minutes is all gathered into their answering of the questions and the.
That's what I'm asking you, is if, uh, fifteen minutes would be giving them a chance to introduce themselves and say whatever they wanna say, plus the questions, we have six questions you could ask them, up to six questions, with a time limit of fifteen minutes, unless you wanna change that time limit, uh, we're talking about fifteen minutes times thirteen, did you say?
So if you do a five-minute intro, up to five-minute intro, and then two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, two minutes for each question?
It says a minute and a half in the, on number eight. So are we gonna go to two minutes or stick with a minute and a half?
I would, I would just like to, like, overall.
Like fifteen minutes total?
Fifteen minutes, and that's the end.
What happens if they, we don't get to all the questions?
That's, that's the way it is, that's the way it's gonna.
But don't you want everybody to ask, answer the same questions? You don't wanna have somebody have a chance not to answer a question, you know?
Okay, so you can, like, have a limit for each question.
So what do you wanna do, two minutes per question for an answer?
So that would be twelve minutes, right?
Plus the intro of five.
Plus intro of five, you okay with that?
That's seventeen minutes?
Up two.
No, no, that's up two.
They may not take all five to introduce themselves.
Well, fifteen is better than seventeen. Well, that's what is in here, I think it's fifteen.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's, we're looking at a couple hours.
I don't think, if they're still answering the question, I don't think. I don't think, if they're still answering the question, I don't think we're gonna stop them from answering the question.
Right.
You could limit the number of questions you're gonna ask.
Not, not, not everybody's, like Ms. Lucy said, not everybody's gonna take up the whole complete fifteen minutes. So we, uh, so the way it's in here right now, the five minutes and the minute and a half for, for fifteen minutes?
I think it's seventeen. Two minutes for each question and five minutes for introduction.
Seventeen minutes, Smalls.
Maximum seventeen minutes.
Uh, I'm, I'm, that's what we were talking about, but I just seen, what we've seen in the paper, I mean, on the proposed interviews, it's a minute and a half, but, uh, you know, two minutes. Either way, I don't think we're gonna do the complete, like you said, seventeen minutes on each applicant. Some might take the full time.
It'll be the intro which will be the title.
Totally up to you. If you think they need five minutes to introduce themselves and two minutes to answer each question, that's the fair way to do it. Instead of being worried about how much time it takes, if you think that's more than enough time, you can vary those, those numbers. It's, Ken, it's your, it's your meeting, it's your interview.
Three minutes for the intro? I mean, even myself, intro myself, I'm not gonna take that, because then I'd just be rambling.
We don't want that.
Yeah, three minutes.
So that'd be fifteen total then, right? Let's do that. Three intro, two, two each question.
Okay.
You okay with that, Ms. Lucy?
Yeah, I'll be okay.
Anything else you need to know?
Nope.
Can I get that in a motion or do we not need it?
You don't need a direction.
I, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't unconfuse.
Process. Yeah. And we're going to swear them in that night?
We've done that in the past. When we appointed Lucy Lawrence, we swore her in that night.
Yeah, I would swear them both in after you've selected both of them.
So Lucy, I know you, you contacted each candidate. Did they all say they could be here?
Yes.
Good.
So I'd swear both of them in at the same time, so you don't have one councilman taking that seat and then he's interviewing the next one.
Oh, no, yeah, wait till it's all over.
Yeah, you wait till the very end.
I can prepare the agenda for that.
Yeah. Actually, yeah, we'll be adopting a resolution for each of the candidates. So we'll do that at the end of the, at the, we'll do the vote, winner will be announced, or the selection will be announced. You'll confirm it by resolution and then she'll swear them in. We'll have it set forth in your agenda.
Okay, just like accepting a vote.
And we're adjourning tonight to the meeting on the eighth.
Yes.
So you won't have to call a special meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, no, I think that's it. And we will, Stacy, you want to talk about appointments on your commission? Let's see. Here, go ahead, turn your mic.
Actually, it's just up to you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Lambert, to go forth with who you'd like.
Well, I want her to discuss the, the process.
Um, so we had one application, Christopher Periconi applied for Planning Commission District One. And we interviewed him, Councilmember Lambert and Mayor Ammavilla and myself interviewed the applicant. He has been serving on the Planning Commission for the last four years. And we agreed unanimously to bring his name forward for consideration tonight.
Thank you, Stacy. I was very impressed. I met him and through the Zoom meeting, I was very impressed what I heard. So at this time, I would like a motion to appoint. Ken?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Christopher Periconi for questioning, if you guys agree.
Second.
Here we have a motion and second. As stated, this would be for one position for a four-year term for District One, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, ayes have. Christopher, thank you very much for applying. We appreciate your willingness to serve the city. Okay, we'll go to item number ten, advisement of public notices, and there's nothing to report today. So now we'll go to our city manager's report, Mr. Panero.
I'm sorry.
I'm on eleven.
Uh, just want, hope everybody had happy holidays and a good new year. That's my report.
Good job. Okay, so now we'll go to item twelve, which is a report on Merced County Association of Governments, Peninsula Clean Energy, Measure V Committee, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution District, and the Business Improvement District. So Ms. Lucy, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, it was our annual meeting where we honor our, our employees for the air district under what is called the STAR system, which stands for service, teamwork, attitude, and respect. And so all of the employees who had anywhere from two years to twenty-five, thirty years were present and acknowledged. And it's, uh, I think it's a wonderful thing, Mayor. I'd like to see something like that happen for us in the future where annually we will recognize our employees who have five, ten, fifteen, twenty years and so on of service to the city of Los Bannos. Also, each year, the Air Board puts out a calendar. And the calendar has drawings in it from different children that have been chosen within the San Joaquin Valley area. That would be all the way from Bakersfield up to Stockton. And most of the children, I would say unfortunately, are Fresno and below. But we had one child from Merced County who won for the month of March. And hers says, "Smog shop, do your part to keep our air clean." And all of these children draw their pictures, first, second, and third, receive an award. They're all acknowledged for being in the calendar. And so I'm, I'm going to attend our school board meeting and encourage our school board to have our children start submitting for the calendar. And hopefully someone from Los Bannos will be chosen in the future. The Air Board also received appropriations, funding in, from the State Environmental Protection Agency for Class Six and Class Seven trucks, zero admissions. And that grant was, excuse me, a to, that we applied for was a total of eight billion dollars overall in the United States. In July of twenty-five, the district submitted its proposal to EPA. And November the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, EPA granted the district eight point nine million dollars. Some of the air, uh, districts that, uh, put in proposals were the city of Modesto, who will receive eleven trucks. Missions Lennon, which is a laundry business, will receive ten trucks. Fresno Unified School District, one truck, and the city of Series, one truck. And it's a matching grant, not only just from EPA, but from the district. And the partners only have to come up with one point, uh, two point one million dollars. So that's, that's a great deal for those trucks. And the other grant was thirty million dollars for zero admission, school buses and shuttle buses. This is a real popular grant. I think Los Bannos School District has done pretty good in transcending from the combustion vehicles. But the unfortunate thing is that not a lot of money was granted this time. And we still, we still have, uh, twelve hundred applicants within San Joaquin Valley in the queue applying for these grants. So hopefully in the future, there may be more money coming down, but right now, all the monies have been expended. And those that are in the queue, um, by status will begin to receive this money that came down from the federal government. And that's all that I have. Oh, um, yeah, that's all I have for the Air Board. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, well, I have a lot of meetings coming up with MCAG. I have a meeting on Monday. I have a meeting later this month with Peninsula Clean Energy Group, Measure V. That was the committee I was on, so we have to find somebody else. So that's the oversight for the monies that, uh, the transportation money, the, the sales tax that was voted on a few years back. So we're gonna need somebody for Measure V. Josh, you'll probably find somebody out there. So I'll re-report on all those meetings probably at, at our next, the third Wednesday of the month, after I have all these meetings. Meetings, meetings, meetings. So anyway, but it's all good. It's all good stuff. So anyway, with that, we'll go on to city council reports and let's see. Ken, you're first.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. So first I want to congratulate Jennifer. Congratulations for last month, employee of the month. Uh, also, uh, again, I would just want to say that, thank all the department heads from last year. We had a great year, got a lot done. Uh, and next, condolences to the couple of terrorist attacks that we've had on New Year's Day in New Orleans and Las Vegas. You know, our sympathies, sympathies go out to them, to the wounded, the ones that are injured and... That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Ken. Ms. Lucy?
Thank you, Mayor. On January eleventh, the Mid Valley Disposal will be having its annual cleanup event here in Los Bannos. And it will be from eight AM in the morning till twelve PM in the afternoon. In order to participate, you'll have to have a current ID, which could be your utility bill. The limit is one vehicle per address. The maximum vehicle size is a truck with a twelve-foot bed. They will be accepting furniture, appliances, metal wood, e-waste, green waste, general trash, and mattresses. They will accept tires, but no truck tires or tractor tires. And the limit on tires will be nine. And for other disposals such as batteries, fluorescent tubes, you can go to, um, the Highway fifty-nine landfill or Billy Wright Road. And if you have Sharpies or medication, the Merced County Sheriff's Department will take that disposal for you. And, um, I also had the opportunity to attend COCO with the Popos. And I missed it last year, but a really nice event. And I want to thank our police department for their continued effort to community outreach with our kids and with their families. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year. Hopefully twenty-five is gonna be a good year for our city and our residents, economy. I just want to let you know that even though there's only two meetings here a month, there's a lot of work going behind the scenes. We're having a lot of meetings with staff and, and working things out. And I'm very encouraged on the direction the city is moving. And that's really all I have to report. I just want to remind everybody, we'll be adjourning this meeting to next Wednesday at six PM, these council chambers. We will be having the applicants give their statement, answer some questions for the thirteen applicants for the two districts. Hopefully, we'll be picking someone, two people that, that evening. And, um, we wish everybody the best with that. And we will be going into closed session. The conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. Agency-designated representatives, the city manager, Panero, city attorney, Vaughn, human resource director, Melanie, legal counsel, Tufa, and employee organizations will be the Los Bannos Police Association, Los Bannos Police Sergeants Association, Los Bannos Firefighters Association, Los Bannos Police Dispatchers, Community Service Officers Association, the Los Bannos Public Employees Union, Public Works, Local One, Los Bannos Police Middle Managers Association, and the Unrepresentative Miscellaneous Employees. So we have a lot of work to be done in, in that this evening, to bring everybody up to speed in what direction the city is going. I wanted to let you know that we're gonna be fair to the community and fair to our employees. We respect them all very much and look forward to working with, with everybody to come to a conclusion. So at this time, I'll be, we'll be going to closed session and I'll come out and adjourn to January eighth at six PM in these chambers. If we make any decisions tonight, I'll be, we'll be coming out, taking a vote, and making it public, knowing what decisions are made. So thank you very much for being with us this evening. Okay, we are back in, from closed session, in the conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code five four nine five seven point six. Under those items, we gave, uh, advice to staff and no action will be taken tonight. And so now we need a motion to adjourn this meeting to our, to our next meeting. If I could have that, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to adjourn tonight till next week, January eighth at six o'clock.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn this meeting to January eighth, six PM. This meeting is adjourned to the eighth. Thank you.